I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. And it's May 5th, 2021. And Commissioner Givens, do you want to make a motion to strike item in?
Yes, I moved to strike item in, which, sorry, I'm trying to get to that page, was ordinance 2021-20 to create a chapter of the Monroe County Code regarding the Emergency Health Enforcement Action Plan Appeal.
Second, and before we vote on this, I'd like to thank the Governor for having vetoed this bill. It, very few county commissioners are actually experts in public health and really could not be counted on to make good decisions regarding public health. So we really see this as being a rather dangerous move, although I believe that we would always be guided by our Health Department. And Mr. Cockrell, would you like to call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Here, or yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two zero.
And we now have the Commissioner's public statement, which Commissioner Thomas was going to read. Do you have that handy?
I do. I'd be happy to share it. Thank you. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. And now we have department update. Ms. Cottle, would you like to update us on the Health Department?
I will. Thank you very much. And thank you for the remarks about Senate Bill 5. We are pleased about that veto as well. So the Board of Health met last night. They met yesterday at 4:30. So I guess whether you consider that last night or yesterday, I'm not sure. But they did review the data, and because we are remaining in yellow advisory, they are not making any changes at this time to our current regulations. And that means that they did not rescind anything, nor did they extend anything at this time. So our current regulations around COVID-19 go through May 28th. The Board is going to meet again on the 17th to see where the data is at that time. Of course, we're looking at it constantly every day, but they will meet at that time on the 17th, 17th, 19th. It's Wednesday that week to look at the data and determine if changes to that need to be made at that time. If we can see improvement in our numbers and our data, and we can move to blue status and surrounding information and data looks good as well and supports that that is true and accurate, then certainly we can be looking at changes and loosening of restrictions. I do want to just kind of go over again. I know I've done this before, but I continue to get questions about what those advisories mean. So the state advisory map is color-coded, and it's based on two metrics. It is based on percent of positivity and the number of cases per 100,000. So we are in yellow. That means if you look at our numbers, our positivity rate right now is low. Even though it's ticking back up a little bit, it is still low. That is a blue number, but our cases per 100,000, because they are over 100, put us in orange. So that, that orange and blue combined, when you do the math, come out to a yellow advisory. So when we do move to a blue advisory, initially, that would mean that our positivity rate was still low and our cases per 100,000 had dropped below 100. Now, to be fully blue, we would need low positivity and cases of 10 or fewer per 100,000. So that's a ways to go to really be able to say we're, we're really very clear and have minimal, if any, community spread. So it's going to take a little bit of time, but we know that as we continue to see downward trends, we can start to make decisions based on that. And precautions and vaccinations are really going to be our way out of this. So this week, we anticipate our cases per 100,000 to be around that 125 number. Last week, they were at 105, and the week prior at 123. So there's a little bit of a plateauing there, not huge differences, but it's just kind of vacillating a little bit. We are seeing low death rate. We're not seeing a lot of deaths routinely. And the deaths that were just added were late, really late notices, so late reporting. So I think our last, our most recent death actually occurred in early April. Hospitalizations have plateaued some, and certainly our vaccination rates are going up. So we will continue to watch that. I am a little bit, just kind of a warning to everybody, we may see our positivity rate inch up a little bit more just because the number of tests that are being done is coming down. So it could take a while for that to kind of adjust itself a little bit. And we saw that happen over the, kind of the end of the year transition that we had when there was less testing. So the advisory is a combination of those factors. So it's very hard. I know this is hard for individuals. People often want, just give me a number. What are you looking at? But it is not one number. It is the whole picture. I have talked for the whole year and a half about it being a puzzle, and each piece of information is a part of that puzzle. And we're just trying to put that together so that we can make the best decisions that we can at that particular moment. Vaccinations equal fewer cases. Vaccinations equal fewer hospitalizations, fewer deaths, less spread of variants, and actually fewer variants. So the more that we can get people vaccinated, the better. The vaccine is safe and effective, and it is really vital to significant change. And so the next steps are really in the public's hands. If we continue our precautions, masks, hand washing, and by the way, this is World Hand Hygiene Day, so a good day to just mention that masks, hand washing, and distancing are still important along with getting those vaccinations. And speaking of vaccines, tomorrow, we will be at Crestmont Boys and Girls Club with a walk-in clinic from 12:30 to 5:30. That is a partnership between the Boys and Girls Club, the Housing Authority, and the Health Department. And we are pleased to be able to offer that to nearby residents and anyone else who may find that convenient for them to go to. On Monday, the 10th, we have a clinic at the Convention Center for our Latinx and Hispanic population and people with Spanish as their first language. Of course, anybody is welcome at that clinic as well, but that is kind of our focus. And we are extremely grateful to our partners in the community to help with our interpreters and translating material for us. We could not make that clinic happen without our community partners. We are planning other clinics throughout the community, trying to kind of spread things out and reach people who may be in outlying areas of the county, who may be having trouble to get in. We continue to do our homebound program, and we are making plans with schools for the 12- to 15-year-olds in anticipation of them becoming eligible for the vaccine in the coming weeks. So where are we in terms of our numbers? Monroe County has vaccinated over 60, or almost 62,000 people have received at least their first dose, and 48,000 are fully vaccinated. And that equates to over 37% of our eligible population has been fully vaccinated. Over 48% have received their first dose. And compared with Indiana, 36% of our eligible Hoosiers are fully vaccinated. So that nearly 2 million Hoosiers, over 4 million Hoosiers have received their first dose of vaccine. And there are over 700 vaccination sites with more being added every week. So we are working very hard to make sure that vaccine is accessible to individuals, and the state is working to make that happen as well. It is now going out to providers that are interested in having vaccine available in their office. Federally qualified health centers are able to get vaccine and be a provider as well. So we're really working hard on that. Rides are also available if people need rides to get to their vaccination point. IU Health does have a program for free lift rides. They do need to call in advance, and that is available Monday through Friday, 8 to noon, excuse me, 8 to 5 Monday through Friday, and 8 to 12 on Saturdays. But also, if you are going to one of the state sites, and you would know that if you're on that registration site, if it says VAX, V-A-X, after the location, you know that that's a state-funded site. So here in Monroe County, that would be Crestmont. It would be the Convention Center. It would be IU Medical Arts. It would be IU Simon Scott Assembly Hall. Any of those would be eligible for an Uber voucher through 211. And that is simply, you do have to have an appointment for those. But you make an appointment, call 211. They will verify your appointment, and then they can send you a voucher. So as I say that, the Convention Center and Crestmont are walk-ins. So I'm not sure how the transportation would work, but if you need transportation to those, please reach out to 211, and they can contact us, and we can figure something out. Appointments, walk-ins, either way works. I would say let's be the first county to reach at least 50% of our eligible population to be fully vaccinated. And the last item that I want to share with you is kind of a fun thing. I suppose our Harm Reduction Program and Syringe Service Program was part of a video series. And you may remember me talking about that when that happened some time ago. It seems like a long time ago that that happened. But the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis supports us. We get a grant from them every year. And they partnered with the Indiana Department of Health and WFYI to put together a video series of harm reduction programs throughout the state. And they received notice of an Emmy nomination that came from the Lower Great Lakes Chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. And it is in the Society, Societal Concerns, No Harms, The Battle to Save IV Drug Users. So I also say that because to, just apropos, today, the Scott County Health Commissioners are voting on whether or not to extend or cancel the Syringe Service Program in Scott County. So again, the good news is that the video series is nominated for an Emmy. I think that that's a great thing, but also very concerning. This fight is not over. And so we continue to work in serving those who are dealing with substance use disorder.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Givens?
Yeah, just a couple. I'd like to remind people that we have a federally qualified health center with what used to be Vim and now HealthNet Bloomington on West Second Street. So if they are able to administer the vaccine, I'm sure that they're, they're going to do that as quickly as they can. And also, I was going to ask Ms. Cottle if she could please put the information about the clinics, the date and the address and stuff in the chat for people, just so that words go by quickly, but what's written can stay longer, I should.
Sure can.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that's wonderful news about the video and the Emmy. That's pretty exciting. And now, Alice, we have our Emergency Management Director, Allison Moore. Do you have any updates for us?
Good morning. Thanks, Commissioners, for having me again this morning. I just have a couple announcements. We've now shifted into the month of May. And so we have two blood drives scheduled at the Monroe County Convention Center. They are scheduled for May 24th and May 27th. The 24th is our day drive, so it's in the hours of 10 to 3:00. And the 27th is our evening drive. It's in the hours of 2:00 to 7:00. There are some spots still available on both those drives, so I encourage residents to hop on the redcross.org website and look up the Convention Center, and then make those appointments. And this month, in the month of May, we're focusing on electrical safety. It's actually Electrical Safety Month. And so each meeting, I'll just give a couple helpful hints. The helpful hints I'm going to give today on electrical safety is to make sure that you are using the correct amount of wattage that your appliances need. If you do not, it could spark a fire. So make sure if you get new appliances, that you're checking those out and make sure that your house and your amounts can suffice what you're plugging in. And then also to watch for overloads in your outlets. So don't put extra, you know, you can buy outlets that have six outlets, so you plug it into the two, and then you can then actually plug in six things. And so make sure that if you're doing things like that, that your wattage can actually hold that many things. And so it's also something you shouldn't do is to plug in multiple appliances into one outlet, because again, that could spark an electrical issue and have electrical fire. So those are two safety little hot topics. And each week, the rest of this month, I'll be able to provide some different electrical safety targeting and hopes to help prevent any kind of electrical fire. We do have the Monroe County Alert on our county website for anybody that has not signed up for Monroe County Alert. I know I continue to say it's exciting that every week more individuals are signing up for Monroe County Alert. We've had more people sign up, you know, since last year through COVID than we've ever had before. And it's an encouraging, it's, it's exciting. And we're glad that people are taking advantage of that free service where we offer any kind of weather-related event, as well as any information about the different vaccines. So the, the different vaccine clinics that Ms. Cottle mentioned today, those will be actually going out on Monroe County Alert, the days of those events. And we are happy to collaborate with her and put those out to the public. So if you are not signed up for Monroe County Alert and want that information, you can find it on our county website at co.monroe.in.us. And you can go in and do it electronically. If for some reason you do not have internet services, or it's something that you're not capable of doing, we are more than happy to get you signed up via the phone. And you can do that by contacting our office at 812-349-2546. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Givens?
No, just I'm, I'm, I'm just so amazed still that we have these blood drives going.
Yeah. And Treasurer McClellan, did you have a comment or a question? I see your hand is raised.
It's wanted to be included in department updates when you get a chance for me. I am ready.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thanks very much, Allison. That's, the information about electric fires is really pretty relevant nowadays. Almost especially people who have older houses are having to plug many, many things into one outlet frequently. So it's a good idea to be careful about.
It's not something we think about often. And then when I saw that it was this month, Prevention Month, I thought, well, it'll be nice just to hit some T-card, some, some key targets and let people think about those things and make sure that they have the proper, that they're plugging in the proper way. So happy to share. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And Ms. Ridge, what's going on in Highway?
Good morning. Same old updates for us. Prepping roads, paving, patching, cutting tree limbs, and working around the weather. The only thing I really did also want to report is that Monroe County was awarded a bridge project in the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program last Thursday. So we were awarded $407,000. It's a 50-50 match. We will be replacing, rehabbing the bridge on Roger Street between 11th and 10th. Yeah, just north of 11th Street. So, and we will be doing that in 2021. So if you have any questions, that brings our total, they started community crossings in 2016, and we've received a total of $3.9 million from that program. So it's really helped Monroe County with paving and bridge, bridge projects. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, any comments, questions?
Just congratulations on getting yet another one of the Community Crossing Grants. And I think sometimes people think about the county as only being responsible for roads and bridges outside the city limits, but that's not true. We're responsible for bridges over, what's the length?
20-foot span.
Yeah, so almost every bridge in the county.
Yeah, we are responsible for anything that's on a city or county road that's, that fits that description. We have approximately 157 bridges that we maintain.
And of course, culverts are also counted as bridges. So just because it doesn't look like a bridge doesn't mean it doesn't have to be taken care of.
Absolutely. We have probably about 4,000 culverts in our inventory that we maintain also.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Treasurer McClellan, you have an update?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, I have an update from the Treasurer's Office. Monday is May 10th, and that means that property taxes are due. So I just wanted to come on and remind the taxpayers that the property tax deadline is coming up. And since we are still close to the public, I also wanted to let everyone know what the ways to pay are. Everyone should have received a bill in the mail, and in the center of the bill on the back are the five different options for how to pay. And I'm just going to go over those real quickly. There's, you can, there's mail. You can mail in your check. There's online. You can do an e-check online. You don't even have to use your credit card, or you can use your credit card online. You can use an e-check by phone. If you don't have access to a computer or to get online, you can call in. That number is on the back of your bill. You can do an e-check or a credit card. We have a drop box at the courthouse. If you use the drop box on the north side of the courthouse, that's checked multiple times a day, and we will mail you a receipt. You don't even need to include a self-addressed stamped envelope. That's just as good as coming in and dropping it off in person. We'll get that the same day and mail you a receipt. And then we have local, some local banks are accepting payments on our behalf. Handing your payment to on the west side, if you know where the west side chrome, it's, you pass the bank to go to that Kroger. And First Financial Bank, they have two branches. One is out on the east side by Chick-fil-A, and one is downtown on College on, I think it's 601 North College Avenue. And then if you need to make an appointment, like to say to pay cash, go ahead and call our office, and we can set up an appointment for you. That's 812-349-2530. So if anyone has any questions, please email us or call the office, and we'll be more than happy to help you.
Thank you. That's certainly important information for the public. Commissioner Givens, do you have any questions or comments?
No, just thank you, Treasurer McClellan, for getting on and reminding folks.
Yes.
You're welcome.
A time of year when people need to pay attention to the dates and get taxes taken care of. Thank you very much. And are there any other department updates?
I don't have an update, but I wanted to allow you guys the opportunity to introduce the new Veteran Service Officer.
Okay, thank you. We would like to introduce our new service officer. His name is Stephen Miller, and we're very excited that he's on board and will be helping us out with this. Mr. Miller, do you have anything to say?
Good morning, Commissioners and department heads. I really appreciate this opportunity to, to reach out and say hello. I just wanted to let you know that over the last couple of weeks, I've been reaching out to the Vicki and the Veterans Office here in Monroe County. I also had a meeting with the Director of Outreach with the Indiana Department of Veterans Affairs. And just this morning, I spoke with the, the gentleman who's, pardon me, who is filling in as the manager for the Veterans Clinic here on the west side. So I'm just really excited to get started on Monday and wanted to say thank you for, for this opportunity. Did you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, any questions, comments?
No, but Mr. Miller, we're very, very happy to have you on board, and it's nice to see you again.
You too.
Wow, it sounds like you're jumping right into it.
Yes, I'm really excited.
Very good. We are certainly thrilled to have you on board. Although we will miss Mary Elfman a bit, who preceded you, but it sounds like we found a very good replacement. Thank you.
Thank you.
And are there any other department updates?
There does not appear to be any.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda and is limited to three minutes. After two and a half minutes, you'll hear this tone. Thank you. And that will mean that you have 30 seconds left to finish up your comments. Is there any public comment today?
Well, it looks like we have a couple. First up is Tamby.
Please, Ms. Winkle. You, you are muted. Ms. Dayton, can you tell what's going on?
It looks like they are unmuted right now. If they're talking and it's not working, it's likely that Zoom has not selected the correct microphone.
Oh. Then is there any way to correct that?
Unfortunately not. It's, they have to go to the little mute icon, and then on the desktop version, there's a little carrot to select the microphone.
Hi, this is Tamby Wykel-Cassidy. Hi, ladies. I apologize. I did not intend to raise my hand at this particular moment. I was moving my iPad around a lot, getting situated here at the office. So I apologize for that, and I, I, again, I wasn't intending to raise my hand for comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Next up is Jim Shelton.
Welcome, Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber, speaking again on behalf of Quarterpoint Special Advocates or CASAs. Want to remind the public that CASA will have a training session starting on June 7th. So applications will be due in just a couple of weeks. So if this is something that anybody out there has thought about doing, now would be a good time to do it. The next training will not be until October. For people to learn more about this, we're having what we're calling a virtual launch and learn next Tuesday, May 11th at noon. You can go to the Monroe County CASA Facebook page and find the details about it. You will be able to interact with some CASA staff and with some CASA volunteers and learn more about what it's like to really be a CASA. We really need people to step forward and help us advocate for these children who've been abused and neglected by their parents, who are now in the court system. So thank you for the opportunity to share that information.
Thank you. And this certainly is a very rewarding and important endeavor. If anyone has the time and the inclination, please do sign up for it. Is there, do you have, is there any other public comment?
There are no other hands raised?
Thank you. Then we will move on to approval of the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes from April 28th, 2021.
Second. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. And the next item?
Move approval of the claims docket. This is accounts payable for May 5th, 2021, and payroll for May 7th, 2021.
Thank you. Ms. Erin Miller, would you like?
Good morning. The total for claims was $820,960.60. $174,083.2 was for McAllister Machinery Company Incorporated to purchase a new roller for the Highway Department. $169,363.42 was for Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield for April claims and fees. And finally, $65,000 was for Nexus Group for 2021 Trending and Ratio Study Fees for our Assessor's Office. And as far as the payroll total is concerned, that was $1,625,316.6. $1,148,599.72 were for the direct costs, and the remaining $476,716.34 were for the indirect costs.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Givens?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Are no hands raised?
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to new business. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have the March reports from the Treasurer and from Waits and Measures. And now we can move on to new business.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-20, allowing Area 10 Rural Transit to submit the application for funding under Section 5311/5339 of the Federal Transit Act.
Second. And Ms. Purdy, would you like to tell us about this?
Yes, I'll start us off. And we have Chris Myers here also from Area 10 Rural Transit. This is the resolution and the application for the 2022 Rural Transit Grant Application. And so just to give some background, Monroe County Government is the applicant and serves as a pass-through for funds received as part of the federal section 5311 and 5339 program that provides public transportation in the non-urbanized areas of our county. Monroe County Government is supportive of rural transit, wants to see more of our local rural area able to use this service. And this, this particular agenda item right here has no money attached to it at this particular point in time. We will be coming back with the approval of the grant later to do that. I do want to note that Ms. Myers will be applying for the full amount possible, which will include Monroe County providing a $30,000 operating match money, as well as providing the makeup of lost funds from Ivy Tech, which is, I believe, around $33,000. And Monroe County is supportive of and will be providing funds in the amount of $10,000 to provide software for scheduling and things of that nature. So I want to just now hand it over to Ms. Myers, who can tell more. But again, this is just the author, giving you guys the the authorization to then, you are authorizing, I should say, Rural Transit to make the application on your behalf. So now, Chris, take it away.
Thanks, Angie. It is a mouthful. It's actually a mouthful just running the program too. Thanks, everybody. Happy to be here on behalf of Rural Transit for our annual grant renewal application. You know, we've been partners for over 30 years, providing transportation outside of the city limits into the city and from city out of the county, not just from Monroe County, but also Owen and Button and Lawrence County is our region that we cover. As Angie said, we're going to be applying for the full FTA allocation that we have given to our region. And so that would make an operating budget total of $1,811,48, of which FTA will be matching $875,524. The state will match $312,096 through their public mass transit funds, and then the rest will be made up of a various patchwork of local support. We do have the unique opportunity, we haven't had it in, I think, five years, to apply for capital discretionary funds. And so we're very excited to be able to upgrade our systems, to have an actual software program for dispatching. And it's going to be helping with pre and post inspections and an online portal where people could actually reserve, really bringing us into a much more efficient system and something that was recommended for the route optimization study that we had a couple of years ago too. And we're expecting that total to be about $55,000, of which the FTA, the federal funds, would pay $44,000. So looking to the county to help us with that piece. And then Area 10 is going to actually provide the local match for hoping that we will actually get HVAC improvement. We do not have AC in our garage where our mechanic works. And as you know, with the climate situation as it is and has been and getting worse, and it does lead to us not being able to physically be out there making repairs and preventative maintenance during some pretty hot summer days and wanting to apply for that, looking at probably about $23,000, and we would provide that match of about $5,000. And then the other piece of this is the vehicle replacement, and we're looking to replace one low-floor minivan and then five buses. This will get us so that our oldest fleet will be 2016 and 2022. So we'll actually finally be kind of caught up with our replacement plan. It's been a few years in coming, but we're very happy to be able to do that. And again, Area 10 will be collecting from other sources, not Monroe County, the local match for that. So we're looking at a total for the vehicle replacement of $331,750. Federals will pay $265,400, and then we will come up with $66,350. So happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know that was a lot of numbers. I don't know how Jordan does it every time.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Commissioner Givens, do you have any questions or comments? You're muted.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to thank Chris Myers for doing all the heavy lifting on this.
Yeah, this is pretty exciting. It's good to know that rural transit will become even more available and more efficient, which is very good news. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised?
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will now move on to item B.
Move to approve BTEC Agreement for Security Cameras at Cars Farm Park. Fund name, County General Professional Services. Fund number 1,000-30013-0803, in the amount of $3,166.69.
Second, Ms. Whitmer.
Yes, the Parks Board would like the approval of the Commissioners to purchase four security cameras for Cars Farm Park. We're also working with TSD on a laptop for the Cars Caretaker to view these cameras. Sorry, to view, to view these cameras live. That's about the gist of it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Givens, any comments, questions?
No, I think it's a good move, especially since we've been seeing all these thefts of the catalytic converters and things like that. I think this is a really smart thing to do.
It's a move in the right, we're also putting up lighting, and we're going to hopefully lock our garages and enclose our maintenance sheds.
Very good. I'd like to thank the Parks Board for taking care of all of this. Is there any public comment?
There are no hands raised?
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Indiana Railroad Engineering Services. Fund name 2017 Geo Bond/Trail Expansion. Fund number 4810-47151, in the amount not to exceed $10,000.
Second. And Ms. Whitmer again.
Yes, this is to do with the Next Level Trails Grant. We are actually crossing a railroad by the Los Road Trailhead, and the Indiana Railroad requires their engineers to look at our engineer's design, and it will cost us $10,000 for that. Plus, the grant will only pay for trail-related crossing improvements. They will not pay for vehicle or vehicle improvements. So we'll have to keep that on the back burner to see how much that may be. But for right now, it's just $10,000 for the engineering.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, any comments, questions?
It's kind of too bad that the taxpayers have to foot an extra bill just to have this reviewed by them, since we've already done the work.
That's the rules.
I know.
Ms. Purdy.
Yeah, sorry, I have a quick question. Kelly, I'm looking at the funding out of Grant 4810, and is this in addition to the the playscape project? So this is?
No, has nothing to do with Cars Farm Park.
Okay, so this is a different use for the 4810 that we had previously identified. I'm just making sure.
Yeah, well, 4810 is a trail use.
Right.
And the ADA is coming out of 40 something 13? Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at the, the projects for 4808 and 4810. I know that we have the money. We started off with $261,000 in that particular grant or that particular fund for the playscape and the engineering. I just want to make sure that my records are up to date for you guys.
That is not correct. The 4808 and the 4810 are trail-related. The grant, the ADA grant is 4813.
Okay, I'll send this to you. We can talk about it offline and see what we've got going on here, because my records must not be correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purdy. I have had constituents contacting me about this trail, and they're pretty excited to see that it's going to be continued on to Ellisville. That'll be a very nice thing for the people in that area.
Excellent.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Looks like we have one comment from Jamie.
Please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I apologize. I was trying to raise my hand earlier, but you guys didn't see it. On the catalytic converters thefts over at Cutrite, are there going to be any cameras going in over there to deal with that issue as well?
Ms. Whitmer?
Is that Cutrite? Was that, would that not be a county issue, or would that be a state park issue?
That is not a county park.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
There are no other hands raised?
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Move to approve an MOU with Child Advocates, Inc., Fund Number JDAI Programming. Fun, I'm sorry, it was Fund Name, JDAI Programming, Fund Number 9123, in the amount of $18,000.
Thank you. And Ms. next, please fill us in on this. Oh, you are still muted.
There we go. There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. Hi, and good morning. Yeah, we've come to you guys before. I think it was in 2020 toward the end of the year. Child Advocates out of Indianapolis has been offering interrupting racism training for the last several years. We are bringing them back to our community. We actually have three dates for them to present to us, two in May and one in June. These will be virtual workshops, and for anyone watching that is interested in participating, we do have a few spots available in all three of the sessions. I'm happy to put my email or telephone number in the chat if anybody wants to reach out to me. Each of the sessions are for up to 40 individuals. I will, I'm super excited to tell you that by the time we're done in June, we will have all current probation staff having gone through this workshop opportunity. We have had juvenile staff go through it previously, but this now is going to bring all of our support staff, part-time staff, adult probation, field officers, all of us up to the same spot as far as our learning and understanding in this really, really important topic.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Givens?
Yes, I actually had the honor of going through the training last fall, and in terms of the the training like that, that I've gone through, the DEI training, that was the best that I've had so far. It was outstanding. And the way that they had people discussing issues together, reviewing information, they know what they're doing.
Well, that's tremendous feedback. Thank you. I know, you know, once upon a time, all of these things were done in person, which is a very different experience. So virtual, I think they've really, I think they do an exceptional job of making a virtual experience as meaningful and as detailed as they possibly can. So I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Well, and I was very pleased on the last training that you invited some CASA volunteers in. And I was chatting with one of them after and was told that they really appreciated that, and they wish that all of the CASA folks had the opportunity to do this. So I hope to reach out to them again.
The invitation has already been extended. We have, I think, three or four signed up currently, and they were going to talk about it yesterday at their staff meeting. So we're hoping to get a few more. But yes, that invitation was extended. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. Yeah, it is kind of amazing the way everyone has managed to adjust to doing things virtually and doing it very effectively in many cases. That's been a quick transition for most people. Is there any public comment on this item?
Are no hands raised?
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Givens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of Indiana Department of Health Immunizations and Vaccine Grant. Fund name, Immunization. Fund number 8138. Grant amount $43,813.7.
Second. And Ms. Cottle? Are you presenting on this one? Is it someone, I, this part of my agenda is not readable. Is there someone other than Ms. Cottle who is going to be presenting?
Um, I thought Penny was, but I can certainly kind of try to back this up in that this was actually approved by you guys last week during the work session. And hoping, let's see here, and this is an ongoing, I believe, health grant that they have. And so see here, and this is an ongoing, I believe, health grant that they have. And so it's going to be an amount of $43,813.07. And it's going to cover us from March 25th until June 30th of this year. So it's just kind of filling in a particular gap. So I saw Margie unmuted. Margie has more information.
Yeah, this is just a standard renewal. I did get a chance to look at the language, and it's that sort of boilerplate grant language that you take it or you leave it. So this is certainly a grant that we want to take, and we want the funds. And I didn't see anything alarming or concerning in the language when I reviewed it. So I would appreciate it if you would go ahead and ratify this.
Thank you. Is there, Commissioner Giffens, do you have any comments or questions?
No, we got to hear about this last week, and I felt really comfortable with it.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Indiana Family Health Council TANF Grant. Fund Name TANF, Fund Number 8150-9621. Grant Amount $82,077.
Second.
I just spoke, I just reached out to Penny, and she should be unmuting here momentarily.
All right.
Thank you. I don't know if she's having problems. Oh, there she is!
My apologies. I had to step away to take a call, and of course, you got there, and I wasn't back. So I do apologize. So we are on the TANF, right? So, all right. So this is funds that it's temporary aid, or I think it's assistance now, to needy families. And it supports our family planning clinic, the Futures Clinic. We get these funds every year. It is part of a block grant from the federal government that goes to the state for this purpose. And the state disperses the money to Indiana Family Health Council, who handles all of the Title X funding, and Title V, TANF, Title 20, all kind of fall into that family planning umbrella under Title X. So these funds, while the federal grant cycle is October through September, Title X funding is April through March. And Indiana Family Health Council normally does not get that Title X funding early. They get it usually late. And so they kind of hold these funds back to give them to us early in that April through March grant cycle to ensure that we have operational money to begin our grant cycle, and that we're not left with months of no funding. I will tell you, surprisingly enough, yesterday I received our Title X grant, so that will be coming before you soon. And these funds, again, it's, the vast majority is personnel and supplies and services, and it's all to support our family planning clinic.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, once again, I was just amazed at how specific they are about what has to be done when, and yeah.
Yeah, the state has pretty rigid requirements over these things, it seems. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-19 Stip Bender Farm National Register of Historic Places nomination.
Second.
Hi.
Ms. Bierman?
Yeah, hi. This is Tammy Bierman with Monroe County Planning Department, and I am staff person for the Monroe County Historic Preservation Board of Review. And I do have a few slides I was going to share just to present this item. So let me get that started real quick. Okay, so, yeah, this is the nomination for the National Register of Historic Places for the Stip Bender Farm. This is located at 5075 West Victor Pike in Perry Township, and I included the 1920s plat map because it's a nice depiction of how the railroad and some of the highways and roads that have gone in over time have impacted the site. It is left with 5.47 acres. This is the site here, and it does contain many structures and buildings that are part of the nomination. So a little bit of background here, this is, the picture depicted here is the 1876 Five Bay Greek Revival and Italianate Style I-house that's on site. It is one of seven contributing buildings. There are also six contributing structures and one contributing site as a part of this nomination. And I have included just a few photos here. These are all photos of the home that's on site, another view of the exterior of the house, and then some interior photos. There are a lot more that were provided in the application, which is in the packet, but I'm going to try to keep this brief today. And then a few of the other buildings that were part of the nomination is the Carriage House built around 1875. That's the white building there. And then the upper right, we have a drive-through grain crib that was built in 1895, and you can see a canning shed next to it. And then the bottom two photos are a gamble roofed dairy barn built in 1910. There are also a few additional structures that were a part of the nomination. To the left, you see a limestone fence post, and in the background, a dry stacked limestone wall that you see often throughout Monroe County. And then in the right-hand side, you've got the water pump. And the bottom picture is a view of the dairy barn from inside on the second floor. So the applicant warrants that the Stip Bender Farm District meets two of the National Register criteria for nomination noted in italic letters as follows. So number A, or letter A and letter C. So A says that a property is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. And C that it embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction, or that represent the work of a master, or that poses high artistic value, or represent a significant distinguishable entity whose components may lack individual distinction. So this was heard at the April 19th, 2021 meeting for the Historic Preservation Board of Review, and they reviewed it and agreed that these findings were relevant and have forwarded it to you here for an acceptance and approval, so that we can forward this to the state for further review. I am happy to take other questions, though I do know that the applicant, Danielle Bichot Bell, I think she is an attendee in this meeting, and she put the nomination together on behalf of the owners, Jeffrey and Erica Morris, and she would also be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I just, the whole, the house and the barns and the sheds, they're just all look so incredible. And I want to compliment the family on what they've done in terms of the restoration and preservation of the property.
Yeah, this really is a lovely piece of property, and that dairy barn is really interesting. I always enjoy historic preservation items. It's kind of fun to be able to look at these pictures. Is there any public comment?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Amending Resolution 2020-46, which is the 2021 Monroe County Government Holidays.
And Ms. Sensis King?
Good morning, Commissioners. I am just requesting that we add some additional language to the holiday schedule in regards to the two floating holidays that are being given to employees. And so the language states that an employee hired after May 4th would receive one floating holiday for the remainder of the year, and after a new employee being hired after November 2nd would not receive a floating holiday for the year. Just to add some clarification for departments when they have those new employees that start.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens, any questions, comments?
Just a procedural one. Did you actually second this, Commissioner?
Oh, I don't think I did. Thank you. Second.
No, it makes eminent sense, and I'm glad that we're documenting it.
Yeah, yeah, this makes a lot of sense to me also. Is there any public comment on this?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Ordinance 2021-14, Amending Monroe County Code, Chapter 833.
Second, Ms. Nastir?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen just to walk through a couple of these amendments, and let me know if at any point you have any questions. Okay. So we heard this last week at the work session, but there are four amendments that we have today for your review and requests for ratification. So the first two I'm going to take together, which is 2021-14. Is it okay procedurally if I go ahead and say these together? Is that okay?
Mr. Cockrell?
I think it's fine if she presents them together. I think the vote needs to be taken separately, though.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so the first one, ZOA-21-2, and then I'll also be presenting ZOA-21-4. So we have an amendment to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 833 and Chapter 830. Both of these amendments have to do with locations of properties, commercial properties that are near bridges or overpasses. So right now, we have required parking setbacks as well as streetscape requirements for landscaping where there's a bridge or overpass. So I have some photos to show or illustrate how these policies would change the requirements on the ground. And so the first one we're looking at is near the Third Street exit off of the bypass here. And so where you're looking at this location on the right-hand side is 2345 West Industrial Park. And so you'll see here that if this property were to be required to do a streetscape, it's likely that the average passerby would not actually view or aesthetically see the streetscape, which the intended purpose is to provide a buffer between the buildings and the frontage of the road at the street level. So here's another example. Typically, some of these overpasses in the county are going over railroads, but once in a while, with I-69 construction, we do have them coming over other roadways. But we don't see the need for an additional parking setback, which would actually require the parking to be behind the building in this case, and also landscaping to necessarily be required in these instances. And so I also wanted to point out, there are some other future planned overpasses that would be impacting properties in the county, specifically commercial properties. So the extension of Sunrise Greetings all the way to Gates Drive is a planned extension, and that would certainly be a policy that would be implemented in this case for these commercial properties as to whether a streetscape or parking setback may be required. So the proposed language in Chapter 833 is that it would not be applicable for properties abutting or adjoining overpasses or bridges. So this little 27 that we have in this table over here, and first that you would go down and look at this condition and see, okay, a parking setback would not be required for properties that abut or join an overpass or a bridge. So we find these to be fairly straightforward. And these are also only applicable in the fringe zones of the county. And so in all other areas of the county, we actually only require a 10-foot parking setback. So you can see the most restrictive here, 70 upwards to 90 feet setback, which is much higher than what we would normally require in the other county zones. So we would be removing this parking setback altogether when there's a bridge or overpass. And then similarly, for the landscaping, Chapter 830, we are going to actually implement more of an administrative waiver process, because there are some instances maybe where the elevation height would not exceed being able to see the streetscape. So we wanted to allow a little bit of administrative leeway there to make the determination as to whether the streetscape would be meeting the intent of the overall ordinance change. So we believe that these two changes will help with the county's properties that have bridges or overpasses, which are few and far between, but commercial properties specifically. Do you have questions on these two?
Commissioner Giffens, do you have any comments or questions?
The only thing I was going to say was by putting especially this first one into place, it means that we're not paving over additional areas, which I think is much, much better for the environment. So yeah, I support what you're recommending.
Yeah, both of these seem eminently sensible to me. There's no reason to enforce these in this condition, in these conditions. Is there any public comment on these?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll on item H?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. And I guess if you want to make a motion for the second item?
Here, move to approve Ordinance 2021-15, Amending Monroe County Code, Chapter 802.
Second, is there anything additional you'd like to add, Ms. Nastir Jones?
Yes, I'll walk through this one quickly. This is the amendment to Chapter 802 for elderly housing. And so this amendment would allow for further clarification of the definition to make sure that we're complying with the overall federal code that allows for restriction of housing based on age, which is the Housing for Older Persons Act of 1995. And although we had the definition and the use in our ordinance, it was not permitted in any zoning districts. So we're actually adding it to clarify in the zoning ordinance that it would be permitted in the high-density residential and the urban residential districts. And additionally, we're adding one condition, that if there are multiple housing units proposed on one lot of record, then the plan commission must review and approve the proposed site plan. Any project must meet the height, bulk, density standards for the zoning district in which it is located. So that gives us all that we need to be able to administer the ordinance and allow for elderly housing developments in the county.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just happy to see this. We do have a rather large elderly population, and it's nice to be able to serve them. Is there any public comment on this item?
No hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Ordinance 2021-16, Amending Monroe County Code, Chapter 830.
Okay.
Second, and Ms. Nastir Jones again.
Yeah, so this is the one I presented together with the 2021-14, so I don't have anything further to add to this one.
All right. Commissioner Giffens, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cottrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
And this is the, oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry. Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, amending Monroe County Code Chapter eight eighteen.
Second, Ms. Nestor Jones?
Yes, so this is the last amendment. So this is the amendment to Chapter eight eighteen referring to the permit revocation procedure that we have in our ordinance. The amendment that we're requesting today is actually to allow for a revocation procedure after the first revocation notice has already gone out. So if, for many of those of you in the county that receive a permit or a reviewer, permission from our department, the revocation procedure never comes up. But for a select few where compliance has become an issue, we have a revocation notice procedure in which you get ten days after notified of the compliance issue to resolve it and meet the the terms of the permit that you were originally issued. Now, if there are multiple compliance issues subsequent to the first notice, in the way it's administered now is that each time you would get ten days to comply. But what we would like to do today is ask for a procedure following the first revocation notice to strengthen our enforcement efforts so that if there is a subsequent violation of the ordinance following the first attempt of revocation, we may be able to follow it. So it's still administratively discretionary. But it would allow for us to, instead of giving them ten days to cure and and resolve the issue, it would send notice of clear issuance of revocation and the reasoning for revocation, and then the applicant would be able to appeal that decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals and then to courts beyond that. And that allows us to have a little bit stronger enforcement procedure and also not keep circling back on the ten days to allow for compliance, because the goal is that, you know, if there is noncompliance, is to get them back into compliance, and it's not to keep notifying them of noncompliance issues and that compliance should always be followed. So this gives us a little bit stronger language to enforce that.
Thank you. Comments or questions Commissioner Giffens?
It sounds like it just speeds everything up in ways that protect the interests of the people of the county.
Yeah, it's it's not unknown for people to just ignore their plans that have been approved, and that can lead to an awful lot of big problems, most often not for them but for their surrounding neighbors. So I'm pleased to see this. It's something that should be strengthened. Is there any public comment on this?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cottrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, amending Monroe County Code Chapter two seventy regarding American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Second.
Give me a second, I'm trying to find where I can get myself on camera. There, can you see me?
Yep.
Yes, and I'm sure everyone is aware that the federal government has passed the American Rescue Plan Act. Part of that plan is going to indicate that we are going to see, receive approximately half the funding within the next month. This ordinance adds that fund to our list of funds, and the restrictions found in that federal legislation are included in in this ordinance so that we have guidance in our code and as to what we can use it for. It does reference a plan. That plan is in process and awaiting further guidance from both the state and federal government as to what could be put in that plan. But this is essentially put there so that we can receive that funding and we could put it in the proper fund as an accounting issue.
Thank you. Any comments or questions Commissioner Giffens?
No, I'm glad we're, this is being taken care of. It's my understanding that we may receive that first tranche of money next week, as early as next week.
That would certainly be good news. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cottrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens? Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty, creating a chapter of Monroe County, oh, we need to.
That one was struck at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, sorry, my bad. Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one to provide financial support for pantry two seventy-nine, fund name county general, fund number one thousand, and the amount of ten thousand four hundred dollars.
Second, Mr. Cottrell?
Yes, and this is kind of something that we've been kind of doing, or you guys have been doing for the last year or so, probably over a year now, and that due to the pandemic, we have, the county has been giving support to local food pantries and that, and this is just giving ten thousand four hundred dollars for the pantry two seventy-nine so they can continue their work through this pandemic.
Thank you. Comments or questions Commissioner Giffens?
I just, I want to remind people that this pantry was started by a Girl Scout Troop two seventy-nine. It was just, I think they were sixth graders at the time, and they graduated from high school last spring, but the pantry has continued. They are seeing record numbers of people make use of this, and so I just want to thank all the people that volunteer out there and all the people that make this possible.
Yes, this is certainly a very worthwhile cause, especially right at this time, and it's very nice that it is serving the people that are in the northwestern part of the Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cottrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Aztec Engineering Group, Inc., Amendment Number One for Mount Tabor Road Bridge Number Thirteen, funded name major bridge, fund number eleven seventy-one, and the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Second, Ms. Ridge, please.
Good morning. So this is actually addendum for the bridge. The additional costs are related to additional geotech investigations, mitigation plan, and environmental field survey and reporting. I want to give a kudos to Kelsey in the department because she actually negotiated a lot of the cost down from what the original addendum was presented and worked through some different options to decrease this amount.
Thank you. Questions or comments Commissioner Giffens?
I I continue to learn new things. Today I was learning about WIC drains as I read through this, and I had to go look them up and look at, you know, for an image for them, but wow, the the things that you all have to do to make things work, especially in the kind of clay soil that we have around here. It's amazing.
And that is what a lot of times we get these addendums, and it's usually soil-related. When we did Bridge Forty-Six on Kinzer Pike, we ended up having to go with WIC drains on that, and that's kind of been the same vicinity of the of the county. So it wasn't a surprise that we would see this.
Thank you. Yeah, it's kind of amazing to realize the amount of money that goes into maintaining our bridges and roads and keeping all of this moving around the county easily.
It is very costly.
Yes. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cottrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Next item, please.
Move to approve Proposal for Preliminary Design for Highway Department Relocation, Fund Name Twenty Twenty Geo Bond, Fund Number Forty-eight thirteen, in an amount not to exceed three thousand five hundred dollars.
Second, Ms. Purdy?
Good morning again. Um, yeah, this is exactly as it states. It's a proposal for us to figure out how we're going to move our highway department out to the highway garage.
Thank you. Questions or comments Commissioner Giffens?
So we're we're trying to make things more efficient again, right?
Correct.
Yeah, this is a very sensible plan, and I'm sure that the highway department will be kind of excited to be all gathered in one place, and it'll make things easier. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cottrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Award for Emergency Operations Solar Roof Contract to Solar Energy Solutions.
Second.
Okay Commissioners, this is actually kind of finishing a prior project that we that you had, which was the expense or the creation of the new Emergency Operations Center and also the the protective area for some of highways equipment. And part of that original project was to put solar panels and inverter on that particular building. And we have, we have requested three quotes from three different entities, received two back, and this is providing the the project to Solar Energy Solutions. And once this is approved by you guys, then we will work with legal and get a contract for you to sign at a later date.
Thank you. Questions or comments Commissioner Giffens?
No, I'm glad that we're moving forward on this.
Yeah, it's always exciting to introduce more solar wherever we're able to. It does save the county quite a bit of money and is one of the ways that we can really avoid using electricity. So is there any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Cottrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Giffens, would you have a proclamation to make?
Yes, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we wanted to acknowledge the work of our public school teachers, especially throughout this pandemic. It's put an extra layer and brand-new challenges on them, and the fact that they have continued to meet those challenges, they've sought new ways to support the emotional and social development of the students in addition to the academic part of what they do. We wanted to laud them, and we will be sending copies of this proclamation to both RBB and to MCCSC, but we thank all of the public school teachers who are out there.
Thank you. And this is also Correctional Officers Week, which President Ronald Reagan created in, oh, I'm not seeing, oh, in nineteen eighty-four. And at the time, he stated, "The professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserve our utmost respect." And yet, this is one of the more difficult jobs in the county. The correctional officers are under quite a bit of stress, and it can be physically harmful at times, and they really carry through very nicely. So we very much appreciate what they do and congratulate them on Correctional Officers Week. And I don't believe that I have the, I I don't think we have any appointments, and I don't believe I have the announcement. Ms. Purdy, do you happen to know what the announcements were?
Let me see. I will definitely, I'm pretty sure I have those. Just one second. I do know that you wanted to remind people to apply for boards and commissions, specifically the SCAP, I believe it is. I might not be using that correctly, the term, the name of that particular group. I apologize for that. Let me see here. I do have the announcements. And if you don't mind, actually, I'm looking at it, and the only announcement was the boards and commissions, and specifically, you're looking for someone who may be interested in serving on the SCAP board, and if somebody else can help me fill in what that actually stands for, I would greatly appreciate it. And then the other thing that was on there is your next commissioners' meeting is May twelfth at ten o'clock AM via Zoom.
Thank you.
Angie, is that the South Central Community Action Program?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anything further Commissioner Giffens?
This is a little unusual, but I wanted to wish everyone a happy Cinco de Mayo, especially to all of our Mexican and Mexican-American friends who are out there. Celebrate safely, please. But also, I again want to thank Governor Holcomb for vetoing Senate Enrolled Act Five. I I think that that our health department is the one that should make, be making, and our health board should be the ones making decisions about what happens. As you said earlier, Commissioner Jones, it should not be the commissioners.
You're absolutely right. It's a matter much better left to the public health officials. And with that, I believe our meeting is adjourned. We will return for our work session at quarter till twelve.